Welcome to the District 4 Town Hall Meeting for Wednesday, September the 6th. This is the Hollywood Park Turf Club Room, and this will be our final Town Hall Meeting for this year because as you know, I now get ready for the Toifoo Drive in the following weeks before we can bless the many families that are in need for the holiday period. We have a number of economic boosting things happening to the city of Inglewood and particularly District 4, and it's only time appropriate, I should say, that you as the residents know exactly what's going on, how long it's gonna last, and what you can expect, both the good, the bad, and the ugly. And so that is why I invited, instead of you always hearing it from Councilman Franklin, Councilman Franklin, Councilman Franklin, I thought it'd be nice to know that we have new stakeholders that have taken over, coming to the city that says they want to become great investors with business opportunities, with job opportunities for Inglewood residents, and then also the fact that we're gonna improve our roadways, so then that way we also can have a better quality of life, amen? So let's go off with the first speaker. As you know, the District 4 Community Center has been relocated. It's been relocated because we're talking about development, and so we need to revitalize the city of Inglewood. Some people call it gentrification, we call it revitalization. And if you know anything about the shopping center at the Crenshaw Imperial Plaza, it needed a facelift. It needed someone that would value the city of Inglewood, that had the financial wherewithal, that had the, I'll say, the knowledge of how to have a quality shopping center, and more importantly, retail tenants that you will patronize. So I had a chance to meet a number of the executives, but more importantly, I want to reach out to the president of the Crenshaw Imperial Plaza with the New Mark Merrill Companies. Please help me recognize Sandy Siegel, if you would please. Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Councilman, very much. Okay, so the good, the bad, and the ugly, I hope that wasn't multiple choice. I don't know who's following me, but I'm the good, okay? So just a couple things I want to talk about. First of all, as the councilman said, I'm president and CEO of New Mark Merrill Companies, who's the owner of Crenshaw Imperial Plaza, and I own 70 shopping centers in 60 different towns in three states, and I want to tell you something you should already know, which you are so fortunate and blessed to be in the city of Inglewood. I've had the pleasure of working in many, many towns, but none with the bulldog over here known as Councilman Ralph Franklin, okay? And so he's a, I don't think he was calling me ugly, but I call him beautiful and a bulldog, and he's a bulldog. And it's amazing when government works with private industry, that you can put the two together and what can be accomplished, and it's just fantastic. And you know, the secret, I think his is Claudette Matthews, who I think is probably outside, but if you haven't met her, she's an amazing woman, and Chris Jackson, who's in back, who's kept things moving, and obviously Artie Fields, who I think you'll hear from, who's the city manager. So it's really been, it's been for me, just an amazing opportunity, and it's one of those places, Crenshaw Imperial, that when we come here, you know, often when you see people in suits walking around shopping centers, someone always pulls up to you and they always have something to say, and in those first few months, oh, here it comes, here it comes, and it's always someone saying, oh, thank you so much for reinvesting in this shopping center. So I want to kind of walk you through the slides here and show you kind of where we've been and where we're going, and let's see if the slides work, right? There we go. So for those of you who didn't pick up on the subtle clue, we're on Crenshaw Imperial. We're on the southeast corner. The center, parts of that center were built as early as the mid to late 50s. We have the office building on the corner, right in front of it there's a McDonald's, and we have that L-shaped center over there. What we've done with it is we've done a number re-tenanting and also total reskining. All told, we spent about $14 million so far on this shopping center. So $14 million covered a complete renovation of the office building. When we got here, the office building was about 60% leased, the office building's now almost 100% leased. We have a brand-new school coming in there, that school will service 500 students, just to give you, put it in perspective. So we have 500 students. We have, we kept, we have a women and infant children program in there that's in two floors, public health, that's also there, and a number of other people. One thing you should know about us, we are a long-term holder of real estate, so our first goal was keep the people who are there, try to find ways to give them an opportunity to thrive, but also bring in new tenants. This is our Planet Fitness, which is under construction, and if you can go back just one slide, please, back to where we were. So you can see in the corner where it says opening January 2018. Right now, that was a, that was a two-story facility. We decided to add more parking, put in the gym, so now we have a gym there. We're adding a grocery store that's coming right in the middle of the shopping center, and I'm proud to announce we're about to have a brand-new Norm's Diner, who's gonna be out on the street. Nice, if you guys don't know Norm's, I grew up with Norm's. Fantastic, yep, I love them, I grew up with them. Krispy Kreme's my favorite, just don't forget your Lipitor, and, but they're going right there in the corner. We also added, this center, believe it or not, had one, total one or two food places. We've added a Chipotle there, we've added a Five Guys, we added a Nona Grill, we added a buffet, our subway remodeled, it's really going place. So let's go to the next slide. Next slide is the Planet Fitness, go to the next one. This is what we were looking at when we started the process, the old sign, the old man, go to the next one, next one, next one. So that's before, next now. So this is what we have now. You guys were amazingly patient while we shut down the parking lots and built different phases and tried to, you know, keep the place functioning while we were doing a lot of construction. This is the, you can see the new sign off to the left, and the DDs that was there before, we relocated the rental center, go to the next one. There's the office building, which has been totally reskinned, and we added all the food on the bottom. We've added a digital reader board on both streets, go to the next one. There's another shot, keep going. So there's rental center, DDs, next one, there's Autozone, I can't believe we made the sky look so good. So there we go, next one, there we go, that's at night, and keep going. And if you have the pleasure of flying over this and you look out of the plane now, now you see a beautifully lit shopping center, and it's fantastic. We have the lighting levels, every one of the light standards in there got at least an extra light in there to raise the lighting levels. We have tons of signage, and more signage is coming to make it easy going around there. One thing you should know about us, we've, from the time we got involved, from the time I met Councilman Franklin, I promised him that we would reach out to the community. We have monthly community events. This is our advertisement for Kids Fun Zone, which we do, we do every single month, invite kids, all this is free of charge, everything we're talking about is free of charge, where kids can come, they can color, they can participate, merchants help sponsor and give parents discounts. Go to the next one. Here was something we called Random Act of Kindness. We literally set up a money booth and literally said, hey, come on down, get in there and see how much money you can grab, and you can't grab as much money as you think, which is, turned out to be a good thing. But the, there's our Easter bunny. I was hoping they could get a happier shot of the Easter bunny. I think in California, putting a guy in an Easter suit, I mean, not a guy, that's actually a real bunny, but putting him in there in a, in that kind of heat probably didn't sit too well, but we did our Easter bunny, do the next one. This is our Santa, and we do free pictures with Santa, next please. And then we do direct mail coupon books. So you should be getting mailers from us, you should, we have a big e-blast program for those that have email, we have an online Wi-Fi program, we do all sorts of ways to connect with you however which you want to be connected. If it's by getting coupons in the mail, if it's by attending an event, if it's by getting something texted to you when you show up on site and give you an offer, we do a lot with technology, so we're very, very involved. Other couple things I think are super important to mention. First of all, the councilmen worked very hard with us to help improve the street scene, so we're still doing work with the sidewalks and the streets to add, to do much more with landscaping and flattening out some of the rough areas that we've had with the sidewalk, so thank you again, Councilman, for that. And very importantly, economic development. With all these new tenants, we want to employ as many people as we can from the city of Inglewood. So I highly encourage you to, one, reach out to the tenants who are there as they open and engage with them, but also reach out to me. I'm a very easy guy to find, I'm at sseagle@newmarkmerrill.com. You can easily, you can email me, you can call me, we have a website, we have both a Crenshaw Imperial website, but we have a New Mark Merrill website, and if you're interested in applying, we'll put you in touch with the right people who might be hiring. But it's super important that if you're interested, that we point you in the right direction, and we're 100% on board with doing that. Is that the last slide? I can't believe it, a slideshow worked perfectly. That's, maybe it's because of our fantastic operators, thank you. Thank you, Aaron. So thank you very much. Is there any questions or anything I can address?
Before we do that, I may have-
Okay, sir, you're in charge.
So I just want you to know, Sandy Siegel and I, and Chris Jackson, our Economic Director of the city, have worked continuously in partnership of trying to bring in the quality tenants that we hope that you will continue to patronize. If anyone remembers being at some of the Town Hall Meetings, I had a survey going out, and I wanted to know where you shop, because if you weren't shopping in Inglewood, then I need to find out where that store, what store it is, so I can bring it here to Inglewood, and we're working on that now. Sandy heard that from the very beginning, and he's been right on every sense. So I just want to get those few comments out, and it's great to be a great partner with you. Now we'll take a few comments before we move on to the next presenter. Gentlemen in the back, we're gonna give you a portable mic. Portable mic? A portable mic, because we're recording. Thank you.
How you doing? I have two questions for you. First of all, you mentioned a grocery store is gonna be in the Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center? Do you happen to know the name of that grocery store?
I do. It was Save-A-Lot, Save-A-Lot Retail, believe it or not, you had the right answer, and if I had a gift card, I'd throw it to you, but I don't. But it was Save-A-Lot. Save-A-Lot closed all their locations in California, so now it's gonna be, now it's gonna be Grocery Outlet, they've subleased it to them, the manager will be locally based, so you will have a local contact there, and they're taking 22,000 feet.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, when will the remodeling of the office building there be completed?
So we're basically complete, okay? So we've completed the outside, the lobby, we have some work to do on the lobby, we've modernized the elevators, I think the elevator, the second elevator will be fixed soon? Soon? Yes, soon. So we, you know, we've modernized all that, the school will be in, so I'd say by the end of the year, you're gonna have a final office building.
Okay, 'cause I was recently there, because I attend the barber shop there.
Great.
Positive trends is in there, and the third floor needs a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, well, we've been upgrading, so just know, we've been upgrading both the common areas, the exterior, the elevators, the major money that's gone into that building, frankly, has been in all those systems and keeping that place running, because I think, as you know, if you've been there, that the elevators have been a huge problem, that alone was $700,000.
True.
So we're working to clean it up best we can.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just so you also know, this is renovation, and that's why I said we're revitalizing that shopping center, and in fact, thanks to Sandy and his team, they accommodated us to be on the fifth floor to have our community center. And so if you're still planning to have block club meetings, et cetera, I'll give you the name and number again, so you can reach out to our liaison, police liaison, Aaron Elsie, so that way you will be able to reach out as well. Again, they've been very accommodating for the city as well, this is what we call a team effort. Next question or comment? Mic, please.
Hello. I just want to wonder, will the McDonald's be upgraded as well?
It is, yes. It is, it is about to start, as a matter of fact, I think it did start. It's been a long delay, they promised it for a couple years, we finally got it going, and yes, they are starting to remodel.
Okay. Any hopes of a Starbucks soon, hopefully?
Well, we tried a Starbucks, we didn't get Starbucks, but I hear Norm's serves fantastic coffee.
Somebody over here, in the back.
Good evening. My question is, the Grocery Outlet you said is the name of this market that will be in the shopping center?
Yes.
Is this Grocery Outlet related to the one that the black lady owns in Compton?
You know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can't tell you, but here's what I can tell you, Grocery Outlet's a chain, and what Grocery Outlet does is they get local operators to run the stores, so you get local representation, so I don't know if there's a connection there or not, but I can find out for you.
All right.
Now, one other thing, you said there's a school, a high school going in there?
Charter school.
A charter. Whose charter school is it? Is it Inglewood School District?
No.
It's not gonna be supervised by Inglewood, is one of these money-grubbing situations?
Yeah, they're, I hope they're not money grubbers, but they seem to be like real, I mean, we do lots of charter schools, most of them do a very good job, I think there's some that don't, but I happen to think these are good operators.
Okay, well, I sure hope that we will keep our eyes on them.
And just so you know, that charter schools get approved in three different ways. The Inglewood Unified School District, the County of Los Angeles, and the State of California. So we don't know which one authorized that, but that's how they got in. Young lady up front here. Okay. Anybody else? One more, one more question, and then I move on.
There you go.
Wait, wait, we're bringing the mic, bring the mic, bring the mic, hold up, hold up.
I know you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Yeah.
Is the post office still in the area?
Absolutely, absolutely. That post office, the councilmen said, this post office doesn't go anywhere, we met with the post office, we're building all around the post office. Post office may not have wanted to be there right this very second, but once we're done, they're gonna be very happy they're still there. So yeah, they're gonna be there, it's gonna be easier to park in front of them, because right now, as you know, when they had the old plaza, you couldn't park in front of them, now you'll be able to park in front of them to have much better access.
So let's give Sandy a hand, we need to move on. Thank you. So he was right, I have been working heavily with Congressman Maxine Waters to make sure that the post office remains in that shopping center. We know that that is a synergy of foot traffic, and if you're gonna keep a shopping center going, then they have to do their fair share of maintaining, and trust me, as many of these challenges I've had of them being open when they're supposed to be open, and maintaining the quality has been more than a notion, to the point, there was a fear that because they did not own the site, that they were simply gonna wait for the lease to expire and they were gonna leave. Well, I have to tell you, the executive from San Diego came down to meet with me, the shopping center owners and Congressman Waters, and they've agreed to stay at that shopping center. Much needed, much needed. So we need to move on. And speaking of moving on, and we're talking about quality of life issues, I know I share a lot of things with you about what's going on in the city, et cetera, but there is actually a gentleman that is a visionary that identifies that I know what the council says we'd like to see in the city, it's my job to work with my staff to make sure that that vision becomes a reality. And so I brought you the man of the city staff, the city manager, Mr. Artie Fields, please come and join us. Thank you. Thank you for joining us, sir. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. And thank you, Councilmember, for inviting me to speak tonight. You and your team do an amazing job putting this together, and I'm glad and proud to be a part of it.
It's all part of our team effort.
Right. So with that, I'll get started. Councilman Franklin has asked me to talk about some quality of life issues, so I'll be talking about some projects that are within your district, but also some things that are happening throughout the city.
This is the time you get out the pencil and the pens that we provided you, use the back of the agenda to make notes, because this is the real stuff that you've told me about you have concerns with.
So I need these. Okay. Okay, so one of the first things I want to talk about is the safe and same fireworks in the city, which has an interesting history, I found out after talking to Councilman Franklin. Let's see, we're getting a little feedback. In 2008, the city council put a ballot initiative on the, before the residents of Inglewood to see if you wanted to continue with safe and same fireworks. You can't hear me? Oh, okay. Yeah, all right, I'll lean forward a little bit. Can you hear me now? And so they put a ballot initiative before the residents of Inglewood to see if you wanted to continue with safe and same fireworks. Safe and same fireworks have been in the city for many years, but what was, what they were showing is that a lot of cities that had safe and same fireworks, there's a correlation between illegal fireworks. So the council was ready to do like a number of cities did, and that is ban fireworks altogether. But a lot of the nonprofits came out, said, look, this is our major source of revenue to generate money for our work, so the council put the matter before the residents, and the residents voted to keep safe and same fireworks. So we have it now, a lot of the nonprofits are happy about that, but I know a lot of residents are concerned about the proliferation of illegal fireworks, and what I want to talk to you about today is some of the things, tonight, is some of the things that we did to make things a little better, or a little, make it sort of the, there weren't as many illegal fireworks being lit in our city. So the first thing we did is we increased our fines for illegal fireworks. So now if you are caught using illegal fireworks, we could, you might find yourself being fined about, you know, from 100 to 500 dollars for each instance where you're caught with illegal fireworks.
And confiscated.
Oops, okay. Oh, and we also confiscated, so we confiscated quite a bit this year, and one might think that, well, you still have heard a lot of, you know, illegal fireworks, but it's gonna take some time, you know, the word's gonna get out that, look, I got, you know, caught with illegal fireworks, and that's not something you want to do. So it's gonna take some time to get it out there, but we're doing all that we can, and so we increased police patrol to get out there and make sure we catch those folks who are with illegal fireworks. We established a hotline so that you can report illegal fireworks to the police department, and we also sent out bilingual mailers out to the public. We also required fireworks stands to hand out flyers, so there was no one involved with, you know, doing safe and same fireworks or illegal fireworks who didn't have the opportunity to find out what the city's policy is with regard to illegal fireworks and safe and same fireworks. So we want to encourage people to celebrate the holiday, but we want you to do it in a safe way where, you know, your loved ones are all safe. So in 2006, you may remember, but we used to have a senior center at Locust and, Locust and Queen, and, but for some reason, you know, the facility wasn't able to accommodate, you know, all the services and the increased number of seniors that were going to it, so the city ended up moving those services to about four or five different, different facilities within the city, and they actually demolished the old senior center. And as they've demolished since 2006, and now I'm happy to say that in 2017, November of this year, we will have this new facility at that same site. So the site will be 35,000 square feet, it'll have underground parking that's secured, it'll be two stories, it'll have a rooftop area where you can go and talk to your friends and hang out, and like I said, it'll be completed in November of 2017, and this is just another view of it from Locust Avenue. Now, to bring things into your department and to your district, Center Park, which is located right behind Worthington Elementary School, just to the west of the school, and what we're doing there is we're redoing the entire Center Park, you won't recognize it when the project is completed. It's gonna have new perimeter walking trails, fitness exercise stations, a new top lot with rubberized surfaces, ornamental gardens, a new restroom, site furnishings, lighting, fencing, irrigation, and new landscaping, and security cameras throughout, and this project should be completed in October. Now, one of the gyms, I guess, the things that I'm most excited about in the city is the downtown revitalization that's going on. So this here is a rendering of what's proposed for that site, and if you recall, it's the old Cadillac site right at the corner of Florence and La Brea. And so this will be a major enhancement to our downtown area. It's going to be, it's a four-acre site, and I can tell you that we actually, the city actually owns six parcels in this, along Market Street, and this is the largest of those six parcels, so the developer that we're working with, which is Safran and Associates, they're working to develop those other five sites, but the Florence, La Brea site is the first site that they're gonna be working on, and it'll have 235 apartment units, market rate apartments, it'll have 95,000 square feet of retail, and a rooftop recreation and pool area, and a possible grocery store, which we're working on currently with the developers at this time. Now, to bring things back to your district, I think your district has some of the most beautiful alleys in the city. For the most part, we're doing a great job getting them all resurfaced. The one, two that have been completed recently are the alleys east of Crenshaw Boulevard from 104th Street to 108th Street, and also east of Dixon Avenue from 102nd Street to 104th Street. This included, both of these projects included over 43,000 square feet of new pavement area to make it safe for you guys to get to your grotters. Now, how many people have the express pass for the highways, for the freeways? Okay, well, not too many of you, but I'm excited about it, because what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be converting the HOV lanes, the rideshare lanes, oh, the rideshare lanes to express lanes, and so you'll be able to go on the express lanes from the 605 to LAX without being in all that traffic if you have that express lane pass. Unfortunately, the project is in the design efforts, and it takes some time for it to get going, but you know, within the next three years, in time for our new stadium to come, we will have these express lanes that'll help get people into the city and out of the city a lot quicker than they are now. And then we have actually, you know, two light rail stations that are being built in the city of Inglewood. The first one is on West Boulevard in Florence, it's actually on the eastern part of the city, and we have one at La Brea in Florence, and then the third one is at Hendry and Manchester, which is just outside the city, but it's very close in proximity, so Inglewood residents will have three stations that they can utilize, and those stations will, you can catch a train and go either west to LAX, or you can take it going east and go to downtown and catch a connection and go even further into Pasadena. So affordable housing programs, it's something that's a major issue now with, in our city, especially with the new development that's going on, it's making it a lot more, Inglewood a lot more attractive to a lot of people to come and live in the city. And so what we have here, I'm gonna go through a number of programs that we have in place to assist people with housing, affordable housing, and one thing that you may not know is that in the city of Inglewood currently, we have 2,931 affordable housing units, and this is not something that happened overnight. The city of Inglewood has been concerned about affordable housing for quite some time, and we've been doing more than our fair share to try and ensure that there's quality affordable housing for all segments of our, of our community. We have a first-time home buyers program that's been in place, I mean, some of the 2,931 units were part of the first-time home buyers program. That program is not currently operating now, but we're looking at bringing a proposal to the city council to get that going again within the next year. We have a senior, we have senior housing units, and in fact, we're building a new senior housing complex at Eucalyptus and Lime. It'll be 40, you know, affordable units for seniors, and that should be up and running. Actually, we're gonna break ground within the next month or so, and hopefully within the next year, those units will be available for residents. And the interesting thing about all of our programs is that we put a priority on Inglewood residents, and so you guys will be the first in line to benefit from any of the new affordable housing programs that we have. We also have Section 8 in the city, and we have rental assistance programs, and this is a real interesting program. Currently, we have a number of residents who are seniors and are disabled, and what the city does in order to keep them in housing, these are people who may not have had housing if it wasn't for the city program, and we pay their rent for, you know, one to two years until they find permanent housing. So it's a really great program that's helping out, and the council recently approved a program where we're gonna add to this, and we're gonna now work with homeless people who are on the street, and those people who are homeless, we'll look at first getting them, and getting them hotel vouchers to get them off the street, and then after that, once they prove that they could live within the frame of a, you know- know, a hotel, we will work with them to also find them more permanent housing where they can live until we find them permanent housing. So that's an amazing program, and it's helping out a lot of residents here in Inglewood. And we also have some rehab loans that we've done in the past. I don't know if you remember, but there was a program about four years ago, four years ago called the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And what we did there is the city ended up buying about five different homes, and we ended up rehabbing them and selling them as affordable units to Inglewood residents, and that was done on a lottery. Now, you may have seen them, these digital signs that are on Century and Los Feliz. We have two billboards located on Century and two billboards located on Los Feliz. There they are. And they're about fourteen feet high and about fourteen feet wide. And the interesting thing about those is they're not only informative, but the city has received four-hundred-thousand dollars when these digital signs were lit, and we will receive about one-point-eight million dollars in revenue annually from these signs. So they may look good and they're informative, but they're definitely gonna help us hire more police and provide more services to the city of Inglewood. And then since Inglewood is one of the more attractive cities around, a lot of people are interested in coming to our city for a number of reasons. And recently, we found that a number of people, Hollywood has rediscovered Inglewood, and what they're doing is they're wanting to shoot a lot of movies and TV shows in our city. So just for your information, a couple of shows that are being shot in our city include Insecure, which is an HBO program, which is very successful. And if you look at that, it's just like getting a tour of your city because all the shots are Inglewood restaurants, hotels, and streets, and it's an interesting program to watch. Grey's Anatomy is being shot in Inglewood. NCIS, The Mick on Fox, and then Sweetie Pies also has been shot. You know, they have a store right there at Regent and La Brea. And what I'd like to say to you is that they may be going out of business, so if you wanna be a part of history and get in there and get you some Sweetie Pies before they close, I would encourage you to do that. And then in order to get all this information out here that I've talked to you about and which you'll be hearing from the next speaker, we use a number of social media outlets to get information out. Facebook is one, Instagram, Twitter, and YouTube. You can now watch our council meetings live on YouTube, or if you miss them, you can look at old videos of prior city council meetings. So with that, I think I'm done, and I appreciate your patience and as I went through these.
All right, we'll take a few questions or comments, but before we do that, let me make a couple of comments.
I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, I have received many, many phone calls before July 4th, after July 4th, because safe and sane fireworks are approved to be utilized here in the city. No illegal fireworks are approved, but there were so many of them that we had to put laws on the books for enforcement and a stiff enough fine that we can clearly identify that we're not gonna take this lightly. And more importantly, to show how much we're pressing this envelope, we're not only taking the, issuing the fine, we're confiscating those to get the word out, you're not welcome in Inglewood. And so the nonprofit says, "Please do not discontinue safe and sane." This is their major moneymaker they make throughout the year, and they've asked for us to continue that. We will not do that unless it becomes another ballot measure, and you as a voter, taxpayers, will make that decision. The other item I do want to stress, District Four only has one community park, and it's called Center Park, and it's a pocket park. It's between Yukon on the east and between Hundred-eleventh Place and Hundred-eleventh Street in the directions. Hundred-eleventh Street on the north, Hundred-eleventh Place on the south. And it's really behind Worthington, I'm sorry, Woodworth, no, I'm right, Worthington Elementary School. That park has been used, if anyone's been around as long as I have, over forty years in the city, that park was the location for the crips. You didn't use the park, they said they will use the park. You didn't want to use the park, so then we had a number of sexual activity occurring there. So we started, we need to do something better than that. So finally, we have some money, worked with the Inglewood Unified School District and acquired the balance of the park that we needed to be able to get federal money in order for us to now improve the park. So those that are like me, that need to tone the body, we do have a fitness exercise track. And as you go around the track of the whole shop, the whole park, there was gonna be eight exercise stations. So when you go outside where Ms. Matthews is located, look at the easels I have there, and you'll see the sample of what's gonna be there that's gonna be made available. For those that also want to bring the families, we're now gonna have a couple of gazebo's on which you can now have your family sit there and dine. There's gonna be two grills that's gonna be there on which you can have. We're also bringing in a new tot lot for the smaller children, and then we're refurbishing the other lot with the Kaboom Project that we had, and we're removing all the wood chips, and we're replacing them with actually the rubber matting. So we'll make sure you get that out. In addition to that, we also talk about city of Inglewood. Little city of Inglewood, all of a sudden has become a mecca entertainment center. Can you imagine that? And can you imagine now, all of a sudden, we're now having people wanting to purchase your land, purchase your home, and they bank it? They accumulate enough land that they then want to do a massive development. So don't be surprised if people will knock on your door to say, "Do you want to sell your house?" Because they recognize, "If I get in early, guess what? Then I reap the benefits as well as the city continues to go." And then the other part that we've talked about, it has to do with calls I receive because a homeless person is here, a homeless person is there, what is the city doing about it? So I wanted you to hear specifically from the city manager on how he has worked with his staff on coming up with various programs, and he's in the process of doing grant writing to try to get additional funding, housing accommodations, so that way we can provide a quality of life for them as well. So be patient with them. Although you see them at curbside, maybe in your backyard or in front of your house, be mindful that they have rights as well. Homeless is not a crime. And so the issue becomes, "But while my yard?" That's when you make it an issue. And we do the gentle touch of trying to work with them and see if they will accept some assistance that we clearly know that they may need. And some are mentally challenged, some just say, "I just need a handout," or "a hand-up," I should say. And one of our best ones that the city manager can elaborate on if he would, had to do with a homeless person that has been at Century and Prairie for days, weeks, months, years, didn't realize that his family was trying to reach him, and he was a U.S. vet. And once the family flew out, he says, "I don't want to go back south. I'm gonna use my VA benefits." And now he's now housed and has his own accommodations. So we are working on it, but again, it's the city manager and the staff that do their due diligence. With that thought in mind, we'll now open up the floor for taking questions or comments. Anyone? Right there in the back, use the mic, please.
Yes, sir. Uh-oh. Where did you say we wouldn't have that?
Can't hear the mic. Is the mic? It's on. Can we get the other mic? Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to know, where is the Inglewood light rail line gonna be located?
Yes, like I said, there's three stations. There's one at West and Florence, and there's also one in the downtown area at La Brea and Florence, and there's one just outside the city at Hendry and Manchester Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
And those will open up in 2019.
All right, thank you very much. Again, you did say, "Where is it gonna be located?" So the light rail is actually going down Florence, and it's going to loop around by aviation and stop at Imperial Highway and Aviation. And then in addition to that, working with Lawa, Los Angeles World Airport, they're working also on a people mover shuttle to take you into the airport as well, which is another long-term project. Gentleman way over here, and then the lady next to him.
Say, regarding fireworks, have we thought about reinstating the fireworks show that we used to have at Central Park or Vincent Park? Because I think if you did that, I think that would reduce some of the illegal firework activity that goes on the city because parents could take their kids over to the park and enjoy the fireworks show that used to occur.
I know exactly what you're talking about. I know exactly what you're talking about. The challenge we had, we had fights in the park in there, and also there was even gunfire. So we now put our community in arms' way, so it's been banned. It's been banned at this point. The lady next to you, if you hand her the mic, please.
I may have missed when Center Park would be finished.
October, next month, in October.
Next month, October. And does the school have access to the park during school hours?
The answer to the question is yes. Because it is a public park, we have worked with the Inglewood Unified School District to make sure they also assist us with campus police, because when the children come out there for recess, because it's a public park, we don't want them to be plagued with any kind of abuse. So we're working in harmony on that, and again, as we said, we're geared up for the end of October.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there's this young lady in the back, right behind you.
Hi, excuse me. I'm very pleased with the way Inglewood is growing. I've been here, citizens of Inglewood, for fifty years. Now, my thing is, yes, the stores are coming in, but is anyone looking into the cleanliness of the stores that are coming in? You walk in the stores, they are not keeping the stores clean, and you don't want to shop there because of being unclean. You go out the area to shop in other areas. So my question is, are you or have you had anyone to go in these stores to see that they are keeping them clean?
Answer your question, yes, we have. In fact, if you heard Sandy Siegel, one of the things that he does, that he looks at social media, networks, and the people do their response, I got you right there, that does response about the quality and concern. And there's several stores, I have to tell you, that I'm working, reaching out to corporate because, one, the stores trash, two, there's a lack of employees, and three, because you don't refurbish the shelves, people say, "Well, I'm tired of it. Why come in here when the shelves are already empty?" So yes, I am working on that as well. But if you have a specific store, please let Ms. Matthews know so that way we can constantly... All right, one more, there's a comment by the city manager.
What I'd like to add to that is that the city recently hired an economic development manager, and that economic development manager... Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. The city recently hired an economic development manager, and that manager's responsibility will be to work hand-in-hand on one-on-one basis with those businesses to make sure that they hear the concerns that residents have, and that we can do what we can to assist them in, you know, improving the quality of their stores, whether it be cleanliness or safety or any other issue.
Okay, we're gonna take the young lady right there, the other lady over there, and then the one in front of the camera.
I just wanted to make a comment about the express lanes, that they do require a transponder in order to use the lanes. I don't know if everyone is aware of that, but I think that needs to be brought out. I have one.
Okay, and actually, I tried, since I sit on the Metro South Reserves Council for the South Bay, tried to get the transponder to be free. Originally, it was three dollars, now it's a dollar, but the sad part about it is, they're making so much money that we were successful, that all the revenue generated in this regional area stays within the region. So therefore, we're able to control that use. Next question or comment, right there, and then we'll get over there.
Hi, I have a question regarding the hotline for the illegal fireworks. Do you have the number for the hotline for illegal fireworks? They were firing off fireworks just the other day.
I don't have that number, but I'll make sure Councilman Franklin gets that unless he has it available.
On the handouts that I passed you, I had hotline numbers. Would you double-check to see if it's on the, on there? No, it's a white sheet of papers, emergency numbers. Is there anything with fireworks or police department, anything like that? So, and also, there should be the purple flyer, which has the city administration. On that is also the police department, which is the number you can call as well. All right? But if there's going to be a future hotline firework number, we'll make sure that we get it out to the community, okay? We have a question over here or a comment?
Yes. Hi, so I do have a concern about the litter at the Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center, the one where Superior Market is located. Every time I'm in that shopping center after 3:00 PM any day of the week, it's littered with trash. I've seen bird droppings there for months that has not been cleaned up. I was in communication with code enforcement for about three months, Carmen Hayes, to have, try to get that resolved, and it's just to no avail. So my concern is, what can be done to clean up that shopping center, because the litter problem is really bad there?
Well, first of all, let me let you know that there's been a special business-to-business meeting that was held by our police liaison with Aaron Elsie right here. Aaron, raise your hand so people know where to throw the darts. But actually, on a serious note, Corlan is the property management, and there's been a lack of interest. And so we're dealing with the Inglewood Police Department, and we're also dealing with code enforcement to make sure they are sort of be compatible. One of our biggest challenges is when you have a major retailer, such as Superior, allowing the employees to have their breaks in front of their store alongside. It creates a congregation of individuals, and we're dealing with issues of, I'll say, undesirables coming into the shopping center, as well as people using their vehicles to sell merchandise and those kind of things. But it requires Corlan to take ownership, and so we're working on that through our police department. We have a young lady up front here.
First, I want to compliment the gentleman on doing the alleys. They were perfect. You did an excellent job. But because you did such a good job, it is so noticeable when the apartments behind Hudson decide that they want to dump their stuff. I know Ms. Matthews did it the other day, but it happens so often. It happens so often, and, you know, it makes our property, our value drops when you see all of that stuff in the alley, when we got houses that's going for sale that bring their value down. So is there any way, any way possible that you can do something to keep our alleys clean?
One of the things we've done is, those high, those areas where there's a proliferation of furniture and trash, what we told Republic to do is, on a routine basis, just daily, go to those areas and make sure that we deal with those dumpings. So...
I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. You hear me, don't you, right? Right, okay. So what we've, we worked with Republic and said, "Look, in those areas where there's a high proliferation of, you know, discarded furniture and trash, to go to those alleys, you know, daily, to make sure that we get it up as quickly as possible." Unfortunately, it's hard to find, to find anyone specifically because you don't know who actually, you know, discarded the furniture or the trash.
No, 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 let me, let me comment, please. Well, we're not gonna have a dialogue. We got your question and concern, but more importantly, you're here to get information. And I create all this information for you. I hope that you start using it, because on my emergency hotline numbers, the second from the bottom addresses bulky, special item pickup, illegal dumping, and abandoned items. Number right there for you to call, and I have to tell you, as fast as I get it cleaned up, it's back there again. And it's not necessarily your neighbor. It is individuals decide this is a place for dumping ground. And I remember, and I'll reflect back, when I was doing a community cleanup, I agreed to clean up the alley between Hudson on the north to Imperial Highway on the south, from Spinning on the east to Arthith on the west. And I could not get anyone from Hudson to help me come and clean that alley. No one. And I'm pushing a ban or large... And I'm pushing a ban or large cart, and just loading up the illegal, well, I won't say illegal, it was tree branches, dirt, mattresses and stuff, and put them all in this bin, but no one would come out there, and I was doing it even in the rain. So it does start with your neighbors. And I do encourage you to weigh in on having a community block club meeting, to start creating a block club, because neighbor needs to talk to neighbor. Okay, let's do it with Mr. Mann right here. One second, Mr. Mann, we're gonna bring you the mic. If you ever spoke on this subject matter, I asked you to please hold off and let others speak and speak. Can we get the mic to Mr. Mann? Manning, I'm sorry. Manning, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to bring up a question, I'm probably piggybacking on what someone else was saying about cleanliness. I know the sweeper comes through every Monday in my area and every Friday, but it's appalling to me to see why Imperial and Crenshaw, I don't know where a sweeper comes through or not, but every time I'm in that area, there's debris, all in, all in the branches, hamburger wrappers, and this has been going on for a long time. So I don't know what the, what the street sweeper is responsible for that, or what? I don't know when he goes to that area or not, but that's an area I'm concerned about.
So Imperial and Crenshaw, if anyone knows, we're having a homeless issue, and unfortunately, particularly at 113th and Crenshaw, someone is homesteading there in the flower bed. And when they leave, they leave their stuff, and the wind blows it. Also, I have an issue, I ride the metro bus, particularly 710 and 210 up and down Crenshaw. I had a challenge with the debris right there at T-Mobile, on the, on the southwest corner, it was my bus stop, and it was so bad with sticky substance and dirt, et cetera, that I reached out to Mr. Fields and we got it cleaned up. So when you have a certain area, a hotspot like that, don't hesitate to give me a call, and I'll reach out to Mr. Field and his staff to take care of it. Couple more questions.
Am I telling you now, is that all right? Do I still have to call after I'm telling you now?
I think we got the news, Brother Manning.
Thank you, brother, thank you.
We got it, Brother Manning. All right, couple more questions, the lady in the far back, and then the one in back here, and then we need to move on.
Yes, I would like to piggyback on the alley. I live on between 108th and Cullavan on Spinning Avenue, and every time we come out of a garage, peoples are back there having sex. What can be done about that? And we have children, you know, and this in the broad open daylight, I'm not talking about night, I'm talking about 6 o'clock and 4 o'clock in the afternoon, they are having sex, their legs all up in the windows and everything. What can be done about that?
Well, I would suggest that you call the police department. I mean, so that's the first thing, is the police department come out, those are...
And secondly, on Imperial, on Cullavan and Van Ness, when they did the streets over because of the lady that got killed, they put red paint on some of the seniors' houses, and they can't get in there, they can't park their cars in front of their house because they have all this red all the way down. What can be done about that? These peoples are up in age, and they cannot get around.
So we had that issue before, as I shared at our last meeting, the meeting in June of last year, that item was addressed. The LA City handled the, was the main driver for the Van Ness project, and they're the ones that came up originally, they called it road diet, and painted all those curves red, and then put in the bicycle lanes, et cetera. We got them to restore the striping back, because we needed that left-hand turn lane removed, because people need to zip down. They did not remove the red curbing at this time. We're still talking about it. The concern is the flow of traffic. Some people says it's not going fast enough, some people say it's going, it's not, it's too fast. And then the other thing I have to remind, in Inglewood, now we're on the west side, the east side is LA, west side is Inglewood, you have parking, you have a garage in your alley, and we want to encourage your seniors or anyone, that if you're in Inglewood, please clean out your garage, so you can park your vehicles there, that would be a help. Shebe, have your answer? Shebe?
Well, Councilman, I have a compliment, because the alley between 104th and 108th Street on Crenshaw, on the smart and final side, I don't know whether that's east or west, I don't usually have my directions, but on the smart and final side, my daughter lives in that block, 104 to 108, and every time I visit her, my car is tearing up, and it was a mess. So I want to compliment the Councilman, because I did mention it to him, and within a short while, it was repaved. So it is nice, it is clean, and there's no sex going on, thank God, so it is, it is good. Thank you.
So Shebe, just so you know, it was your voice, it's a squeaky wheel against the oil, but it was your voice that got us to revisit that, and we got blessed as a District Four, because when I reached out to the Public Works Director, they already had a project in line for refurbishing, but there was a sufficient, there was enough funds that I was able to set it aside and be able to do that alley, and that's how it got done. And also, I want to go back to the other issue of concern, we need to come in your neighborhood, if you'll let us know the hour of the day and the day of the week, of the anticipated illegal sexual activity that takes place. I have, while you laugh, but I got three locations, this is now the third one, that I have during the day, and worse than that, it's in the other two locations I have, it's as the children, elementary school kids are walking to school. Terrible. So yes, we did, one more comment up front, and then we need to move on. Wait a minute, you've already asked. All right, come on, come on, come on, come on.
Okay. Do you have anything in place to start repairing the sidewalks in the avenues? They are horrible. I think I have called your office and spoke to you about this, and you said that you would have someone out. They did come out, but they didn't come back to fix it. So what I'm asking you, would you please revisit that?
So if you will be so kind to wait till afterwards, because I have already pre-scheduled certain sidewalks to be repaired, and I just need to make sure if you're included in that...
I hope so.
I hope so. If not, I hear from you, right? Okay. Gentleman up front, and then we need to move on, if you don't mind, please.
Hi, yeah, I stay on Van Ness, and my issue here is that from Century to Imperial, we have lanes that now have been converted back. They were one lane, we had a middle lane, turning lane, and we had the bike lane. That was a good thing. Now we've gone back to two lanes, and one of these lanes, we have people getting out the car, we have it flagged as a bike lane, and then we have speeding traffic, all in this one lane. Okay, so people are getting out of the car, just like it's a neighborhood street, with the doors open, and people are flying down the street 60, 70 miles an hour. You know, it's just a matter of time, it's going to be something very disastrous. When it was a single lane, that made the most sense, because you had a, you had a bike lane, a single lane for driving, and you had the turning lane. So it's not a situation where it's ever been too slow, okay? Nobody's bothered about it being too slow. It's been, it's too fast, it's way too fast, and that's day and night.
You are the minority, and I will tell you repeatedly, the majority of the people said, that left-hand turn lane that was put in place became the most illegal issue that we ever had, because people was not using it for left-hand turn lane, but using it for a straight lane. And we were having many, many accidents, because, in fact, I'll just elaborate just a little bit. Think about the most recent homicide we had. When you had the lane diet, someone had to give up that lane. And when the lane that they gave up, we created a homicide for one of our District Four residents. So majority have spoken, and that has now been restored. The only difference that's been, going to be addressed right now, is the red curbs, to what extent it's going to be. Okay. Okay, very last one, very last one, because Mr. Fields needs to go, and we need to, I'm going to stay on time. And I thank everyone for your questions, comments, and concerns, because this is how we work as a community, good, bad, and ugly, wouldn't I say that? And we're staying on focus on that, and that if there's ways and we can work things out, then I'll try my best. But more importantly is that you at least let me hear your concerns, so that, you know, I can do something about it rather than talk it behind my back, right? All right, young lady in the back, we'll move on, thank you. I know, I know my greatest concern is these drug houses over here on Crenshaw. What is the, what you guys doing with that? And I'm just going to leave it right there. And that would be the next presenter after me, about herbs in town. All right, let's give it up for the city manager, Woodweeze, thank you very much. As I share with you, be sure you bring your pad and pen, because we have a lot of things to share with you, and one of those items that was just brought up will be the presenter after my presentation. I'm going to talk to you regarding the next subject matter, which is called Y-Green. So how many heard of the different financial instruments? One is called PACE. PACE stands for Property Assess Clean Energy. And particularly, if anyone has been around as long as I have in the city of Inglewood, normally when you want to refi your house and you want to spruce it up, that you have to either go to the credit union or get a conventional bank loan. And what happens if there's an issue of all of a sudden that, "Oh, man, I missed a payment. Oh, no, now they're going to put me in foreclosure." And when you default, the whole value becomes due. PACE programs does not provide that, they have a better program for you. So I'm going to read just a little bit, and then I'm just going to talk with my talking points, if you don't mind, okay? The city of Inglewood is a member of the South Bay Cities Council of Government, known as the COG, which consists of 16 cities in the South Bay, and two Los Angeles County supervisory districts, District Two with its supervisor, Margaret Thomas, and District Four, which is Janice Hahn. The COG has a strong reputation of finding ways of improving our quality of life through the region for the past several years. The COG has been providing us various equipment, various programs for energy efficiency, stress the word, energy efficiency, which brings me to my comment regarding PACE. And again, PACE again is Property Assess Clean Energy. It was first piloted in the city of Berkeley in 2008, and it was to help owners install more clean energy products, such as high-efficiency, which is HVACs or heating and air conditioning systems, solar panels, but the first big issue, whenever you have a project, is the upfront money you have to put down in order to start a project. PACE does not require that. What PACE will do is that they will give you the loan, but they apply it to your property tax. So when your property tax becomes due, that will be your payment for that loan. But in order to do that, and also, I want to stress, that if there is a default, the whole obligation of the loan does not accelerate when you got to pay in full. And under the PACE programs, the payment you miss is in arrears that becomes due, and that is very significant. And also, I want to stress the importance, whether you're interested in energy efficiency improvement in your home or not, you don't always have to accept a conventional bank loan or credit union loan, but I want you to weigh in on these financial instruments if you are in need of them. And I want to stress that in order for them to happen, it requires for the city of Inglewood to adopt the resolutions to be able to use that program within the city of Inglewood. There are currently five that have been made available for the city of Inglewood. Some are for business, some is for residential, and some are a combination of both. I want to stress the five, but more importantly, I'll then focus on the residential. The five are the Los Angeles County Energy Program, which finances for smaller commercial and primary larger commercial projects. There is FIG Tree, which provides financing for smaller commercial projects with no minimum project value required. And then there's HERO, California HERO, which provides financial for residential projects. Those projects alone, 362 Inglewood residents have secured the project from the PACE program for the Los Angeles County Energy Program. 221 resident properties have now used HERO, but there's been no business interested in working on FIG. Excuse me. So, and the other two programs that we just adopted or made available for you is on August of this year, is the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. Again, it's for, this one is for non-residential properties. On August 8th, the one that we adopted and a resolution is called Y-Green. Y-Green, if everyone should have this item here, and when you look at Y-Green, it talks about, Y-Green actually is the nation's leading provider for residential, multifamily, and commercial property assess clean energy financing. If you are interested and wanting to get rid of that heat wave, like I'm now dealing with, with no air conditioning in your home, hint, hint, and also going into the winter months, and you still got a floor furnace, hint, hint, that this is called energy efficiency, and you can get a lower interest rate loan, longer time to pay it off as a long-time owner, but it's based on the key elements, again, no money down, this is all in here, no money down, 100% financing, based on your available home equity, up to 15% of your property value, and based on your preference that you can have no payments for up to 29 months, up to 29 months. Now, what's the good thing about this, these PACE programs? Again, I'm not promoting them, I'm only advising you for you as a homeowner or a business, that you decide that you want to upgrade your property for energy efficiency, here are some options for you. And what's really interesting about that is that the loan stays with the property, not you. So when you're going into escrow, you have to divulge that you have this loan, and it's now married to your property, and it is transferred to the new owner. So you get to enjoy the luxury of now having an energy-efficient home, but when it's time for you to sell it, the other person now picks up the piggy bank and has to run with it. So I want you to be made aware of that as well. I want, I have to do my disclaimer, so bear with me. I need to make a disclaimer on behalf of me, Y-Green, and city of Inglewood, that I'm not the resident expert in these matters, but am simply providing you information that you have the options as a property owner to improve your quality of life in your home, particularly energy efficient. If you're interested as a resident of the HERO program, you can write this down, the website is hero program dot com. Hero program dot com. Hero program dot com, with a phone number, 855-437-6411. And the Y-Green program, which is starting up, the website is ygreenworks dot com, it's on your flyer, it's Y, the letter Y, green, G-R-E-N-E, works dot com. And Y-Green spelled backwards is energy, just so you know how the word is, Y-Green is energy. Their phone number, 866, that's 866-634-1358. Again, 866-634-1358. So I'm only bringing these up to you because I am a victim of the quality of life issues. Being a 40-some-year resident, my wife and I does not have forced heat or air. How many of y'all dealt with the heat wave in the last several days? Ceiling fans just didn't do it, floor fans just didn't do it, so guess what my wife and I are going to be investing in. But I just thought, because I have this information, I'd much rather be able to share it with you, because you, with knowledge, there's power. And if you know that you have an option other than a conventional bank loan, credit union loan, and you qualify because you are resident of the city, and you're the homeowner, and you have at least 15% equity in your property, then it may be worth the investment. Okay? I'll take any questions or comments before we move on to the next presenter, but please, hold on to this flyer if you would, please. Seeing none. Oh, uh-oh, one up front, we got one up front. Let's get the mic if you would, please.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but are there certain contractors that have to do the work?
It varies. And so, I get one of my points up, I didn't, he asked a key question or comment and I failed to acknowledge that one key point. Okay. My point was, programs have different financial rules and different interest rates for the property owner. And therefore, signing on the several programs provides more options for you as residents and businesses in the city of Inglewood. When you're seeking financing for improvements for your property or facilities, you want to weigh in on what the options are. So the answer to your question, yes, there are multiple packages. And you get a chance to have a smorgasbord of selecting what works best for you if that's what you want. Again, it's a loan. And the loan, again, I want to stress, is tied into your property tax. So instead of making monthly payments, it'll be a property tax. And when do you pay your taxes? Twice a year. Twice a year.
And the interest rate?
They vary, it depends on the program. Question in the back. Right, got a right mic?
Yes, what if you have your property taxes impounded?
They can accommodate as well, that's still a program. And I like your comment when you asked about, am I restricted with their contractors? The answer is yes and no. Some of the programs do have their specific ones because they want to make sure they are compliant, and others that you may have your own contractor as long as they're able to meet the code of what they require, okay? But I like this, God, this is one of our better town hall meetings where we have spirited meetings, we're agreed to interchange and interact with each other and be able to address specific quality of life concerns. And I welcome them to know him. Any other question or comment on my presentation, if not, we'll move on to another presentation and then I will be back. So we've talked about a number of developments of quality of life issues. And remember, the theme is making the investment in our present and future. Making the investments of our present and future. So several issues have arisen, and I think it's only fair and fitting that you now see the gentleman that I beat up on a regular basis, that he is the Economic Development Director, but more importantly, he's become my friend, child of God, and an ordained minister. And he is responsible for development in the city. And more importantly, when we talk about Airbnb, short-term rentals, which is an issue that I'm addressing with him now, and then also we talk about marijuana, we now have to call it cannabis, I want to make sure that that is addressed as well. So please help me welcome Christopher Jackson.
All right, did I get the clicker? Oh, it's already here. Hello, hello, hello. How's everybody doing today? Y'all look good out there. Y'all look really, really good. That's right. I'm honing all of my skills tonight. Are we gonna go to a larger screen? Yeah, you can just go ahead and start that up. Thank you. All right, perfect, perfect, perfect. First of all, let me start by saying thank you to Councilman Franklin and this tremendous opportunity to come before you. I've sat in the back many times and watched you guys engage and interact with the councilmen and with a lot of the presenters. So it's always been something for me to sit over there and listen to this dialogue. I know you're interested in your community, you're interested in your city, and you want us to be the very best that we can. So we thank you for that challenge that you've given us on a day-by-day basis to try and improve the quality of life of this city. And to the councilman who's done a tremendous job, yes, he beats me up frequently, I take my bandages in his office, but then I walk out and he bandages me up and send me on my way to do what I need to do. And then also his assistant, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank her, Ms. Matthews, for such a great job she's doing and how responsive she is behind the scenes. Fantastic job. He picked a good one, he picked a good one. So listen, we're gonna try and roll through this, I'll try and make it as concise as possible. I'm gonna be addressing variation of issues, some gonna take you high, some gonna take you low. At the end of the presentation, hopefully you have a better understanding of the kinds of things that we have to address. Again, I'm Chris Jackson, I'm the Economic and Community Development Department Manager. I oversee economic development, planning, building safety, code enforcement. So all those divisions kind of fall underneath my rank. We're on the fourth floor of City Hall, so if you're ever up there, you'll see my smiling face on the door welcoming you in, and hopefully you have a good experience. Listen, first thing we want to talk about, everybody's hearing about this particular issue. This is a big one. Because it moves the city from where we are with a great opportunity with what's going on with the NFL to now potentially looking at the NBA as one of the homes. As you know, you know, for years and years and years, the Lakers were at the Forum, we had become accustomed to it and thought it was gonna be that way forever. You know, they left some time ago and went to Staples, and then that left that venue there. Now it's doing great, the Forum is doing fantastic, as you know, number one venue in California, number two in the United States, number four in the world in terms of X book. So it's, come on, you guys are doing that. I mean, fantastic. So you see it lit up, it's beautiful, it's vibrant, but we're still missing basketball in Inglewood, I think basketball needs to be in Inglewood. So what we've done, obviously, is we've entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with what we call Murphy's Bowl. And this is one of the balmer, limited liability corporations that allows him to be able to research and consider options that are available to him and his team that are there. Now, recently, we actually went through a process of an amended and reinstated ENA. The ENA is an exclusive negotiating agreement. It is just the opportunity to talk about opportunity. And it's our formal process to be able to say, these are the only people we're gonna talk about. I think the mayor uses, and I've heard you use, an engagement. It's like we're getting engaged in each other, doesn't mean we're gonna get married, but it does mean we're promised to each other, so to speak. And so that was recently modified on August 15th, 2017. And I just want to quickly hit on the points of that because there's been a lot of discussion about, a lot of news, a lot of, you've seen papers, you've seen, I've seen it all, it's all come across my desk. Most of it is erroneous, 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 I'll just tell you from my standpoint. But let me tell you the features of the amended and reinstated agreement. State of art, it would produce if we moved to the next level, a state-of-the-art NBA professional basketball arena and ancillary uses, up to 20,000 seats, 36-month negotiating period right now that we're in and we're actively moving through. In order for them to enter into the agreement with us, they paid the city $1.5 million to cover all of our costs. So none of that is coming from you guys, they're paying for everything. And you know, we started that trend with the other project where the city isn't responsible for any of that cost. It is subject to sequel review as it's stated right now, California Environmental Quality Act. And then this particular amended and restated ENA redefined the study area because there was some concern, people concerned about displacing housing, moving people away, there's a church in the project area. So it was never intended to do that because the costs associated with that kind of makes the project infeasible. But what we did initially was just create an area where we could study. But because of the outcry, because we heard from, and I'll say we, the mayor and the council and particularly Councilman Franklin heard what the outcry was, got with the developers and said, let's just make it smaller, show where we're actually focusing the opportunity for development. And that way, there's not a question about displacing people. So we're not displacing anybody, church is not, we're not doing any of that unless they want to, that's on them. But it's not gonna be anything that happens via that word we talk about sometimes, which is imminent domain. All right, this is kind of the revised map, kind of shows you the area, you can go online and see this map, it's available to you. And the councilman just indicated it's outside as well, if you want to take a look at it. But it obviously carries a significant enough area for us to be able to figure out, you know, where the arena would be placed, what impacts there would be, all those kinds of things that you need when you're in this ENA or exclusive negotiation period. All right, Daniel Freeman Hospital, anybody remember Daniel Freeman Hospital? Right, okay. So you may have driven by there, we brought it up even though it's not in District Four, it's in District One, but we think, you know, significant enough that you want to hear about, where is it, what's going on? You see the green fencing up there, you drive by it, you see tree splinters sticking up, you kind of wonder what's going on. So the councilman convinced me to include a slide in here, so give you an update of this. This project, it arisen was 310 units, we're now looking at townhomes, we're now looking at 225 townhome units, which means that you're able to access the house and go directly in, multiple stories, not as high as it was before, less density on the site. Demolition has commenced, they've been removing, there was extensive tree study, there's a whole thing about a Morton Bay fig tree, some of y'all know this beautiful tree, I took pictures of that when I first started working here in the city. Beautiful location that's gonna be kind of wrapped around their community center area within the project. But that demolition has started. So now they're just doing the landscaping, they're now going through the process of, they're gonna be doing some remediation on the site, getting all the lead, paint, asbestos, and all that stuff that's been on that site for a number of years out before they actually start doing the full-fledged demolition. We're anticipating that the first phase will be completed by the end of 2019. So you'll see some major transitions there. I think they indicated to us the last we spoke that the starting prices of these homes would be about $700 to $1.1 million. Who lives in Inglewood? Who owns in Inglewood? I live in Inglewood, I own in Inglewood, thank you, I thank you. Right? Because, but that tells you the value of our property, right? So it gives you an indication of what's happening. And that's a townhouse. That's not the front detached garage on your lot with your, this is a townhouse development. But that's what we're looking at in there, in that project. So in one instance, it gives you the value of what's happening in our community. On the other hand, you just go, wow. And I certainly did when I heard those prices. Originally, the project was gonna be somewhere from five to six, but with everything that's going on, 700, and you know how it is, if they say 700, it's probably like eight or nine. I have houses in my community now that are selling for $950,000. Multiple offers, right? All right, so cannabis, 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 cannabis. All right, y'all, don't look at me that way. I wanted to kind of give you, I figured the best thing to do is give you a history lesson real quick so you'll know what's happened. A lot of people kind of, it snuck up on them, so to speak. And we're dealing with all the issues of it. And let me start by saying this, Councilman Franklin has been adamant that we as code enforcement, we as Inglewood Police Department have been on these facilities that are in the community, not just in your district, but in other districts as well. These places pop up without permits, not approved, and so even with that, we have a process that we have to follow to be able to get them out. And we've been some successes, some failures, we're learning, we're learning globally from not just here in California, but other states as well, how they deal with it so that we don't end up with a court ruling that hurts us in the long term. So you know, sometimes that's the worst thing that can happen to you, is a ruling by the court that then causes you not to be able to be as pointed and as aggressive as you really need to be. So let's go back to 1996, right? In 1996 is kind of when it all started, California passed, you, the voters approved, and I know you may not have voted for it, I get that, but as a collective, the state of California passed Prop 14, the Compassionate Use Act. And that set this thing in the motion about medical marijuana at the time. And so we, many people agreed that in a medical environment, we get it, people battling cancer and other diseases, that this may be a remedy that they can use, similar to other drugs that they use to help them deal with the situation that they're going through. In 2003, Senate Bill 420 passed, which then gave additional regulations. And amongst that, it gave clarity in terms of the county's ability and the city's ability to be able to create regulations for these things. In other words, what the state was not doing was saying, you must have it, you must do it. What it was saying was, counties, cities, if you want to do it, you can, setting up your own rules and your own regulations as long as you don't violate the state statute. Fine. So many cities addressed the issue, and in 2008, our city, the city of Inglewood, passed an ordinance, and what we did was we prohibited the cultivation, the sale, or dispensary of medical marijuana at any medical marijuana dispensary association, now listen to all these words, associations, cooperative, club, delivery service, collective, medical clinic, or any other similar use involved in the sale, possession, cultivation, use, and our distribution of medical marijuana in our zones. We said no. Matter of fact, you said no. Because y'all spoke to the councilman, and the councilman reflected the concerns of the citizen, and that is where this ordinance came into place. However, we did leave a little, you know, a little light, and what we said was, we won't allow it to be sold or dispensed and out, so sold for distribution, but if it is an inpatient facility, a hospital, we do have Cinderella Hospital, right? And we do have some hospice environments, and we do have some senior facilities that have medical attention, you could do it there, but you still have to go through a special use permit. Now, in our city, we call it special use permit, a lot of cities they call it conditional use permits, same thing. You gotta go through a discretionary process to get it approved. Now, how many of you can imagine how many entities came forward to go through the special use permit process? Can y'all do like this? No, zero. Let me tell you why, real quick, hopefully the councilman can indulge me. The reason why, because most of the inpatient facilities, like hospitals or these senior facilities, are federally subsidized. And what the feds have still said is, you can't do it. So we have a conflict from the federal level to the state level, who has control, who doesn't have control, and we see the dynamics of that playing out as we live and breathe. All right, so in 2017, guess what? Another one popped on the voter, Prop 64. And Prop 64 took it at another level. Y'all, I see some of y'all going, yep. And Prop 64 said, not only can you do the medical thing if the local jurisdiction approves, but now you can just do it on your own. Right? So it's not just medical now, and it expanded, which was a lot of the concerns on the medical, was that it would expand to other elements, and right, here's what happened. And so Prop 64 established a taxation, a licensing framework for commercial production, recreational marijuana, and allows adults, listen, over the age of 21, to preserve the following, the state laws preserve local authority, so we didn't, the state didn't say you must, again, gave us the ability to be able to say yes or no at a local level. And some cities are saying yes, and a bunch of cities are saying no. So that's why throughout the state, you have this kind of hodgepodge of activity that is going on. And under Prop 64, the state will begin issuing licenses for commercial cannabis production on January 1st of 2018. In other words, you ain't seen nothing yet. Come January, we will be seeing some things. And let me tell you again, and I don't mean to blow his trumpet, but this councilman here has been adamant, I've said in meeting after meeting where he's gone detailed through our proposed ordinance to make sure that he represents what your concerns are in the community. That is, there's a clear message being sent to anybody that's gonna come in our city that we're not gonna tolerate it, number one. You may have to go through this process, right, but we're not gonna tolerate you just plopping up in our community. Now, I didn't want to go into the personal stuff, but there are some personal things that you can do through this act. You can have six plants in your own house, you can grow it, roll it, smoke it, all that stuff, in your house. You could carry a certain amount on you when you travel back and forth, you can't be high while you're driving, but you can carry it without getting into a situation to where the police would take you in and charge you for something. But they still have very strict and stringent rules, and by the way, this is unflowering as time is going on. And I believe you're gonna help shape what this thing ultimately is gonna look like through a lot of the laws that are gonna be coming. So who you vote for is very critical at the state level in particular. So, on August 3rd, our planning commission approved a resolution recommending that the city council approve an ordinance, which will be going before the city council, I think the request is set is on the 12th, the actual hearing is gonna be on the 26th. They're gonna be looking at the ordinance at the planning commission, kind of massage They're gonna be looking at the ordinance at the planning commission, kind of massage, and in this ordinance, I'll give you the highlights, the city of Inglewood will retain its right to not allow medical and recreational sale for off-site consumption. So again, let me, let me stress this to you, cause I hear it all the time. When you see somebody in a facility selling stuff out of some corner location, the city did not approve that. Let me say it again, we did not approve that. They have no license, they have no authorization. But even that, there's due process, which means we have to follow a specific process to be able to get them out, and again, we've had our successes, and we've had a few setbacks with regard to that, but I think you're gonna see a lot more forward moving when it comes. Uh, and also, we changed the terminology from marijuana, stop using that term, it's cannabis I'm fifty, about to be fifty-two years old, I see terminology just change, man, every time you turn around, it come up with something else, right? Doesn't sound quite luminous, cannabis. And this thing is, this is infused products, this is, you know, what, what are the cupcakes? Coffee cakes, creams, brownies, foot lotion, everything that you can imagine is coming on the market as a result, and a lot of communities, believe it or not, are falling into what we believe is the trap. Of permitting it, and then they're gonna spend most of the profit they think they're gonna get in policing, and problems related with crime, and we've already seen what's happened lately. You see it happening, if you start looking at what's happening, it was just recently, I think, a murder on Florence and Sauson. Guy was shot and killed at a medical marijuana facility, you know, and you're gonna see that happen more and more and more, and so obviously, those are things you have to be concerned about. It maintains existing exemption for medical inpatient sale, dispensing or distribution, again, subject to a special use permit, and it prohibits all commercial activity associated with cannabis production. So you're not gonna go into our industrial areas and see folks with plants and all, it's not happening in our city, uh, not as long as this man is here. So I mean, he's making sure that that doesn't happen, so I applaud him on that one. The other thing that he wanted, uh, me to discuss is the congestion management plan, so I'm moving from cannabis, now I'm over to congestion. So I, I get all the glory pieces, thank you, councilman, for that, I appreciate that. So, we, we have a thing called congestion management plan, and this commet, congestion management plan, we call CMP, is, um, is, is, is a, is a, is a document that helps deal with the issues associated with congestion. Now, Los Angeles Metro is the agency that kind of oversees this plan, because as you know, congestion is not just germane to where you live, it's impacted by who's moving through your town, who's coming in and out, so it's, it's bigger than just a city, it's actually a, an area or a region that gets affected by it. So, and, and we see that, and we see that, we're gonna see that obviously happen and unfold as far as the city of Inglewood is concerned. So let me tell you, state statute requires that the city adopt a resolution, and this resolution must self-certify conformance with the, uh, county CMP every year. So every year, we have to look at the projects that have come on, the building permits that have been issued, all these things, and factor that into, make sure that we're in conformance with this particular plan. This is just one of the tools to deal with the issue of congestion. Now, I will say this, our city is in a unique position in that, as part of some of the projects that are going on in and around the city, we're gonna be having, uh, intelligent traffic signalization that's gonna be happening, synchronizing things, we have never had, I've been here since two thousand and eight, and I know what the problem is most of the time, it's just the lights not syncing with each other, you guys know, you get stuck here, and then you're waiting too long, and nobody's over there, and it's not switching. Well, we're gonna be fixing all of that, because now we're gonna be going to a computer-based system that'll be monitoring traffic movement. So a lot more sophistication, and this is part of kind of the things that we look at and the tools we use to judge how well we're doing. Metro requires that, uh, we provide that development activity, which I just shared with you, so every year from June to May of each year, and so, uh, in the council, the council looks at this along with our public works department, who handles primarily the roadways and whatnot, and so that gives you an opportunity to be able to, and I know he hears you, because I hear it, and he, Louis Alwell calls me, and we talk, who's the public works director, uh, and talk about the issues that are going on in your community, to make sure we're trying to do incremental things to address those. Environmental Charter Middle School, I get some good news here, here we go. Okay, uh, you guys know where this school is, at thirty-six hundred West Imperial Highway? You guys know where Yukon and Imperial is, right? So I'm gonna talk about two things going on at Yukon Imperial, that's good news. One is Environmental Charter Middle School, this is six through eight, it's a free, public middle school in Inglewood, offers students a small, caring school environment, you've seen the new buildings that have gone up over there, if you've driven down there, uh, it's, they completed their construction, thirteen thousand square foot facility, and we worked hard with the councilman, let me tell you, I got phone calls, it's a phone call, Chris, they gotta open for this school year, and we were able to pull it off by the skin of our teeth. And so I was good to, I was glad to report to the councilman that we were able to work with the developer there to get everything done, so that this school could open and be able to service many of our, uh, the kids that are, are in our area. This is kind of the concept plans of what, uh, it was gonna look like, that was presented to our planning commission, and then this is some of the construction activity as it is today. So if you drive by there, you'll see the beginning of, of something that is marvelous. When you go there during school time, it's great seeing the kids just enjoy the campus. Uh, and I've worked for a number of cities, and let me tell you, the quality of development that's coming in this city is on par with any other city that I've worked for. I've worked for Whittier, I've worked for Tustin, I've worked for Los Angeles, I've worked for Blenheim Park, I've worked for Santa Clarita, I've worked for San Luis, a few others, but I won't tell y'all those, so. But all those cities, you know, those are urban cities, and you see amazing developments in every last one of them, and we are finally getting our just, in terms of the quality development that's coming online, and it's changing out, it's kind of spiraling out. And here's one of the things that's affecting. Y'all know that gas station on Yukon and Imperial? How many times have y'all seen that gas station on Yukon and Imperial? Let me tell y'all a little something, I don't even know if I told the councilman this, my first accident in a car was right in front of this gas station at the time, back in nineteen eighty-six, I believe. And at the time, it was operational, I believe, but it was the worst, I, I, I avoided Imperial for many, many years, cause I, I, that accident was the first why I had to call my mama, until I got an accident. And she said, what? Right? Uh, but you've seen this thing, and this is how it looks right now, okay? It's eyesore, we've been working on it for a number of years, we're not playing with folks anymore, we're serious, cause if they don't develop it, they gonna tear this thing down, and that's my commitment to the, to the council, but look, look at what we have planned for the location. So we're gonna get a new facility, you can clap, you can clap. AM PM, modern facility to kind of go on, and let me tell you what these little projects do, they then start reverberating to all the other areas. Cause along Imperial, this, it needs a lot of love, you know, we're gonna be improving, it needs a lot of love, and it's a major street with huge potential on it. And you see what's happening over at Imperial, uh, Crenshaw, Crenshaw Imperial Plaza, and that's gonna spread as we go down the street, so you'll have many places to be able to shop and see the transformation before your eyes. Um, and this is gonna be an eighteen hundred square foot single-story service station, convenience market, ten parking spaces, twelve gas pumps, and all of a sudden, you'll see that corner change. Alright? And let me tell you, your councilman, your councilman, I've been here nine years, nine of those years, I heard from him talking about back corner, your councilman, you see this happening in, in your community. Now, look, so I wanted to end on a high note, that was good news, uh, I want to thank you for your patience, I am available for questions, thank you very much.
So, before we take any questions or comments, I had reached out to the Environmental Charter School to see if I get representatives, are they here? It is, that Geneva Matthews, she is the assistant principal, and counselor Wintor McNeil. Would you like to say a few comments?
Good evening. So thank you, Councilman Franklin, for giving me the brief opportunity to speak. My name is Geneva Matthews, and I'm the assistant principal at Environmental Charter Middle School in Inglewood. We are one of three of our schools within our charter network, we have one additional middle school in Gardena, and another high school in Longdale. So we are a part, a public charter school that serves over three hundred students, sixth through eighth grade, and we plan to increase that to three hundred and sixty, which is gonna be our mass capacity next year. One of our unique factors of our school is that we have a very strong environmental focus, we provide every student the opportunity to participate in overnight camping experience once a year, as well as they participate in an elective course called Green Ambassadors, where they learn about water conservation, composting, and healthy eating. We are also partnering with Southern California Gas Company, Bay Foundation, and the Social Justice Learning Institute with our environmental efforts. We are one of the few campuses that are also working with the local restaurants within Inglewood, that are bringing in organic waste, and they bring it to our school, and we compost it, and in the future, we want to be able to sell organic soil to the community. So this is, right now, we're in phase one of that project. So we're really excited about the environmental focus, but we're more so committed to the social justice of this community. So we have a very strong restorative discipline policy, where we don't believe in suspension and expulsion, just like several other schools, but we really want to work with our students to build a really strong relationship with them, as well as understand what there's happening within the community, as well, as well as within their home, to provide a safe environment. Also, we are also really committed to making sure that our students are graduating at the eighth grade reading level and math level, even if they come in below reading level, so we have a lot of resources and interventions that we provide our students on a daily basis. And lastly, um, I would like to highlight, before I let, um, Ms. McNeil come forward, is that we have a very strong student support services program at our school. Middle school's a very unique time, we're dealing with ten-year-olds to thirteen-year-olds in sixth and eighth grade, so not only are they changing socially, they're changing physically, and they don't even know what's going on within their own bodies. And so we are blessed at our school to have a full-time school counselor, we also have an ELD, full-time teacher, our special education department, we have a coordinator and a special education teacher, and this year, we've also been blessed to have an African-American student program coordinator that's focused specifically on our African-American students and make sure they're successful at our school. So that's just a little snippet of us, we have our flyer in your pocket, this is about our school, and if you have any questions, I may be able to answer them after I have Ms. McNeil come forward to talk about our counseling program.
Good evening, Councilman Franklin, and District Four, thank you for allowing us to speak with you today. I stand before you today, not only as a counselor of this school, but as a resident of Inglewood, um, in the Renaissance. And I have to say that the magic that is being created on our school campus is something that every parent, grandparent, and family member needs to see. Today, I come to you to not only speak to you about that magic, but allow you to come onto our campus at any time for a tour. We are creating something that is going to promote the future of Inglewood, we are creating leaders. We are creating leaders who will one day fill your seats, one day become responsible citizens of Inglewood and the world. Our students receive one hundred percent counseling, that means every student of our school is receiving some form of counseling, individual counseling, group counseling, and academic counseling. Our goal is not only the commitment of social justice, but to create leaders of tomorrow. This year, the initiative that I have created and I am in charge of is to increase the African-American enrollment on our school campus. We currently are at approximately a little over ten percent, and our goal is to increase our population to twenty to thirty percent of African-American students. So many African-American students are not given the opportunity to connect with the environment, to explore a world outside of District Four, outside of the Inglewood streets and community, and we want to give them that opportunity. Through connecting them with the environment, the environment is used as a classroom and a therapeutic medium for them to grow and heal from the crime and violence that many of them have seen. I welcome you to come on our campus tour, learn more about our school, our counseling program, and see the magic that our school has created. We are a small school, but we have a big heart, thank you for having us.
So in the interest of time, um, I have been working with this school for, since their inception, and in fact, I even rolled up my sleeves and put sweat on my brow for their Kaboom Project, which is playground equipment in twenty thirteen. So we have been working together repeatedly, but really, what really caught my attention was their mission, and I just want to read it real quickly. "Our mission is to equip all students with the knowledge and skills to graduate from college, to inspire them to discover their own sense of purpose, and to empower them to become quality stewards of their communities and the world." That's what inspired me to be part of this operation, and again, part of the family. And so at this time, we will accept questions or comments from all of us up here, if you have any to say at this time. Going? We have a mic over here?
This is for Ms. Matthews. What month will you be accepting application for the fall of two thousand, um, seventeen?
October first. So October first, you can come into our front office, and you can receive an application, and you can fill it on-site.
Okay.
Um, and we normally do our lottery in February, but to push towards the initiative of increasing African-American students in our school, we're trying to push it back a little later, um, but we still want to do it early enough that we can fill all those slots, cause it's a lottery base. So all you have to do is fill out the application for the lottery.
Okay, thank you.
So see how this ties in, we have Chris Jackson, who's our economic director, I'm not doing all that, all that title, economic director, that has worked, due diligence, hand in hand, of all the permits, requirements to meet specs, in order for this to open up with the new campus at the former, uh, everybody knows the Lutheran churches on Imperial and Yukon, that's where it's now located. And in November, they're gonna have a special ribbon-cutting ceremony to honor this new campus development, expansion. One more question or comment? Lady right there.
Yes, this is for, also for Ms. Matthews, is this for Inglewood students only, or for anyone?
No, um, we are not restricted to the city of Inglewood, we do encourage mainly Inglewood students, but anyone can apply. Um, but like Councilman Franklin said, that November eighteenth at nine AM, I believe that is a Saturday, is going to be our ribbon-cutting and our harvest festival, and we're asking every one of you, if you want to come, you are welcome to come, it's a community event, and we have a lot of things growing in our garden, from watermelon to squash to mint, and we're gonna use all the things that we have in our garden that our students have planted to create a large, um, harvest festival for the community and for their parents, so everyone is welcome.
Alright. A couple more questions or comments, we need to move on to the final presentation. Seeing gentleman in front. And gentleman in the back, so we'll take those two, and we'll call it a day for this
Yeah, just wanted to know if your mission, uh, Ms. Matthews, include special needs children?
Sorry?
Special needs.
Yes, so we do not discriminate against any type of student, if you apply and get in, we will find a way to give you the best accommodations that we have to offer.
Gentlemen in the back, final comment for this session, sir? Okay, hold your hand up, please, so we can get to the mic, thank you.
Hi, yes, this might be a little bit off topic, but any update on, uh, repavement of Imperial Highway, if so, uh...
You're, you're off base, that's the next segment, next segment. If you don't mind, let's give it up for Ms. Matthews, Ms. McNeil, and Christopher Jackson. My goal is to make sure that you get new information. Are you receiving it tonight? Is it something you find of value? So please let Ms. Matthews know that all these calls and comments and emails and stuff we give to you, don't think it falls on deaf ears. We actually galvanize on how we can better serve our community, and what better ways than doing it, by discerning it, sharing it in the townhome meeting, and also, this has been video recorded, so that that way you can say, you know what, if you didn't come to this meeting, you missed it. But you don't always have to be without what you missed, you may not get the handouts, but certainly you can get the video broadcast that's gonna be aired. And for those that know, which is the final segment of the, of this townhome meeting, you know that we do have the viewing made available, for those, it's gonna be aired on Spectrum, or Time Warner, as people maybe call it, but it's also gonna be viewed at the City of Inglewood's website. Uh, we actually have a YouTube link, so City of Inglewood is www dot cityofinglewood.org, and you just kick in on the YouTube link for the District Four Townhome Meeting. If by chance, you do not have the resource to be able to access through the internet, we're making DVDs available at our ICOP Center, Inglewood... Inglewood Community Oriented Policing. And our leader that's over there is our police liaison, Mr. Aaron Elsie. Would you please raise your hand up? That location is now in the Citibank Building at 2940 West Imperial Highway, Suite 508. That's the 5th floor. So he makes it available for you to check out like a library. And how much does it cost? Free. And we just ask that you call his office. That number is 310-330-5346. Monday through Thursday, from 11:00 to 4:00. Again, 310-330-5346. And that same number can be used should you wish to use that location for your block club meetings, et cetera. Okay? In addition, how many of you are still on our job opportunities list? When we provide jobs, are you sharing it with people? We are now finally getting feedback of the number of people that have been blessed, because we make sure these are available, whether it's gone out through churches, block clubs, friends, family, loved ones. And some grandparents say, "My grandkid, he's a job. Get him out of my house." And so it has paid off, and it's worked out considerably. And I just wanna compliment everyone that's assisting us on that. For the LA Stadium and Entertainment District, I have flyers for you guys. This is not a discussion about the forum. This is discussion about the forum. So get this flyer out for the LA Stadium and Entertainment District at Hollywood Park. The next meeting is scheduled for Saturday, September 23rd, at Faithful Central Bible Church at 10:00 a.m. That's 400 West Florence Avenue. Again, Saturday, September 23rd at 10:00 a.m. at Faithful Central. The other items. There was an issue where you heard Chris Jackson speak earlier regarding the threat of Emma Domain, which has escalated. People being all upset. "You're gonna take my home. You're gonna take away my church. I live in an apartment. You're gonna kick me out because you're making available for the future NBA arena." We have revisited that. The project footprint has been dramatically reduced. Again, I stress, you saw it on the screen. There's a bigger diagram of what's out there. But more importantly, we wanna make sure it got publicized, and it was in the Inglewood Today newspaper on August 17th. If you've seen Ms. Matthews, I think we have maybe a dozen of these out there. If you would like to take one and share that as well. And moving right along. Again, I can't emphasize enough about Center Park. For those that live in the area and know about it, that it was drug-infested. It was during the day, at night prostitution activity was taking place. Now we have a chance, and it's become a wholesome environment, both for the elementary school kids to be able to use that public park, and also you as a resident that wanna go there and exercise, both for children and adults, and also can have a family gathering. I think it's outstanding. On Saturday, August 12th, the Partial Recreation Library Services, along with the Arts Commission, held a community dedication of two new public artworks at Crenshaw Imperial Plaza. How many people know where Crenshaw Library is located? Crenshaw Imperial Library. When you go there, there's two different artists there. One is called Inglewood Growing Artists Project. And it specifically addresses the title Infinity Library. And you will see displayed in the reading section that there is a multiple displays of the different libraries throughout the world. But also, another presenter gave iconic abstractions. So when you drive down 111th Place, or down Crenshaw, look at the library along the wall. You'll see the artwork that we've done, and inside there is part of the iconic abstractions. And you'll see pictures of the stadium, Randy's Donuts, those different varieties that's there as well. Next announcement. Hispanic Heritage Festival. Again, here's a flyer. We're having an annual Hispanic Heritage Festival. That is Saturday, September 16th at 11:00 to 4:00 at Crozer Middle School. And the major charge is free. The event is free and open to the public. So there'll be live bands, interactive with carnival-style games, a number of booths, hearing screening programs, authentic food, car classics, all that's gonna be there, and it's free. So you have the flyer for it as well. The other item has to do with everyone should have received in their home the Community Information Guide. It's very critical that you use that, so then that way you know what's going on in the city, and it's accessible for your use. And the gentleman that then asked about the next project has to do with the Imperial Highway Improvement Project. Who brought that up? So I don't misquote. I'm gonna read what I wrote. "The Imperial Highway Improvement Project will extend from Van Ness Avenue on the east to Prairie Avenue on the west. The project will be designed and constructed in partnership with the County of Los Angeles, and will include street, curb, and sidewalk improvements. As the city of Inglewood is not the leading agency on this project, but the LA County Board of Supervisors is coordinating that, currently your bids are now going out and waiting on to be awarded, and we anticipate to start construction in January 2018." So, and also, those that came to the town hall meeting before, I told you we was short a few dollars. It's great to know people in high places, because Congresswoman Maxine Waters came to our town hall meeting, and she earmarked for Inglewood, Councilwoman Franklin, District 4 residents, for Imperial Highway, $5 million to make sure that clear that project out. So it's all about the speak you will, and if you don't speak up, you lose out. So I wanted to be made aware of that. How many people know the area called Lockhaven Community? If you live, as I do, between Century on the north, Imperial Highway on the south, from Crenshaw on the west, east, to Prairie on the west, I'm gonna read to you what I'm in the process of working on. "Due to the heightened demand," I'm gonna stress, "heightened demand for street parking in Lockhaven Community, I'm working due diligently with Public Works on exploring the implementation of two-sided parking pilot program to relieve the street parking congestion in the area while maintaining two-way traffic flow. Not one-way, but two-way. The Lockhaven Community that is bordered on the north by 104th Street, or the south of Imperial Highway, and the east of Crenshaw Boulevard, and the west of Prairie Avenue, these are the streets, and we're working to start the pilot program as early as November of this year." Much needed. Been there for over 40-some years, and it seems like there's more families moving in and not leaving. It was a single-family house. Now all of a sudden, it's now multiple families living in the single house, and the adult children also have vehicles. So it's become a major challenge. Next item. Century Boulevard. Century Boulevard Improvement Project. I gave you this flyer. And I experienced it today trying to come here. I knew about it, and yet I went into it. Imperial, think of Century Boulevard and Crenshaw. The city has acquired some of the property of the corners. And we're now working on making new right-hand turn lanes, dual-left-hand turn lanes. You name it, it's a mess. But with all messes, it's just temporal. We're subject to improve it, but we got these hiccups in the meantime. So I wanted you to be made aware that you now have been informed. It's in writing, so you can share with neighbors. Find you another route. Find you another route. Let's see what else I'm gonna share with you. I gave you the notification. It should be the flyer. Missed the flyer. Missed that one. But there's a flyer I provided you that said the Free Document Shredding and Donation Event. So that is scheduled again for Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in front of Inglewood High School. I wanna stress, Inglewood residents only. They will require ID. Now, I'm not saying that family members may come to you and want you to go with them, but it is for Inglewood residents, okay? So therefore, be sensitive to that issue as well. Anybody live in the apartment complex called Darby Dixon? Darby Dixon Community? If not, let me echo this, since it is being televised, that FAA, Federal Aviation, has now approved a new 2020 noise corridor, and we're now including Darby Dixon Apartments to now get soundproofing. So if you know anybody that lives in those apartments, let the landlord know that we are in the process of sending out letters, and Darby Dixon is those that is located, that Century Boulevard on the north, 104th Street on the south, Crenshaw Boulevard on the east, and Club Drive on the west. So the eligibility went to effect as of October 1st, 2015. However, because of the new eligibility guidelines that were established, and individuals who may have been eligible under the previous program, which ended on December 31st, 2015, may not be eligible under the current program. So for additional information of this current program, you're encouraged to call the Residential Sound Insulation Program Department at 310-412-5289. Again, for code enforcement, I'm sorry, for residential sound insulation, you need it on 310-5289. 310-412-5289. A couple of items I wanted to stress had to do with the sheet I asked for you to always hold on to, and that is the emergency hotline numbers. That sheet's very important, because in addition to the orphan trash that we've identified, we also have the other issue involving illegal auto repair business. They're going on illegal phone sales, illegal street vendors. Those numbers I gave you is what I want you to hold on to. I'm almost done. Couple more minutes. I passed out this out to you, Neighborhood Housing Services. If in fact, you don't wanna move, but you wanna improve your quality of life, again, this is another program for you to weigh in on, and they assist you, not only to help you upgrade your property, particularly if you need a new roof, a new sewer lines, or new wiring in your house, et cetera, but also they help you for the free prevention of foreclosure. And then finally, finally, the last item I wanna address has to do with the flyer I provided you regarding the Southern California Gas Company's support for the renewable gas projects. So I wanted you to be made aware that those that had been plagued with us dealing with Southern California gas coming down Crenshaw under massive construction, where we've lost the center lane for months, they've now been able to recap that and get it active for all of us to use. Well, in conclusion, I'm gonna read what I wrote. I appreciate your time. No, I just talked to you. I just wanna thank everyone for coming. It's more important that your presence here and your attention of staying here shows that you're hungry for knowledge. And as I stressed before, with knowledge is power. Will you take this power back into your community? Back on your block. And more importantly, again, we wanna reemphasize that it's critical that all of you be sure that you're informed and share that knowledge. Thank you very much for everyone coming. Have a blessed one. Enjoy yourselves through this evening.